This meeting of the Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. This meeting is being livestreamed in addition to taking place in person. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Here. Thank you, everyone. Please stand for the flag. I want to ask Commissioner Gill to introduce himself to salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the senseless killings and murderers going on in this country. Thank you. I hereby have before me certification from the clerks that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
No, Mr. President, there are none.
Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
In that case, let's move to the public comment session. Tonight's meeting is a combined conference slash board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. So if there is any member of the public who would like to comment on agenda items only, please come to the microphone and state your name and affiliation for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. There will be time later in the meeting for public comment on any other items. So I ask you to please limit your comments at this time to agenda items only. Madam Clerk, let the record reflect there's no one wishing to speak at this time. Let's move to ordinance on introduction and first reading. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinance or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one.
Okay, let's move to ordinance number one, which will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Director DelGaudio will handle the site.
Frank DelGaudio, Director, Department of Health and Rehabilitation. Mr. President, ordinance one is a revision to an ordinance that was approved last year for the hospital fee pilot program. So to simplify what's going on with this ordinance is that every year the fee changes to the hospitals. It's based on the Medicare cost report that is submitted every year to the federal government. So instead of doing a change to the ordinance every year, we're asking for approval of a one-time change that'll change the language based on how the cost reports come in. I could read what the revision to this ordinance is. So it's in the second and fourth paragraph, but basically what we're asking for is that the Essex County hospital fee shall be imposed on each hospital's annualized non-Medicare discharges, which is the difference between annualized, I'm sorry, I need glasses, I can't see, total inpatient discharges and annualized Medicare inpatient discharges derived from the hospital's Medicare cost report, from their report CMS 2552, or successors. That's the major change to the ordinance. So instead of having a fixed dollar amount, it has that standardized language which will take us through the fifth year of this pilot program.
Thank you, Mr. DelGaudio. Mr. Polavecchio, any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, Mr. President. So Frank, nothing else changes, has changed about the program? This is just, like you said, instead of having the fixed number, it's tying, it's tying that language to the metric, whatever the state's metric is for determining what the fee is.
Through you, Mr. President, Frank DelGaudio, Director of Health and Rehab for the county. That's correct. So that fee was basically the result of the report from 2020. And now this fee will be for what we put forward for 2000, the fiscal year 2022 through '23.
And actually, the hospital, I'm sorry, Mr. President, the hospital center is exempt from this fee, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick question. This is the fee that towns reimburse us for if we take their patients?
Through you, Mr. President, Frank DelGaudio, Director of Health and Rehab. No, this is a fee that's assessed on basically eight hospitals throughout Essex County. The fee then is applied and the rate is calculated, sent to CMS for reimbursement to increase the amount of payment on Medicaid patients throughout the county. So this program in fiscal year 2021, 2022 resulted in $224 million to the county hospitals.
And you're asking for this amendment so that it'd be a fixed price or?
Through you, Mr. President, Frank DelGaudio, Director of Health and Rehab. What happens is every year the cost report numbers change. It's all based upon discharges from the hospitals. So the way it's calculated is there's Medicaid discharges, Medicare discharges, and then there's non-discharges associated with any of those two methods of payment. So that's how it's all calculated. There's only a few people in the state that actually understand the methodology and our accounting firm that, our consultant does a really great job helping us understand all of this. So the numbers are all calculated and it will change every year. So rather than come back with a fixed fee, we're asking for the language to be a little bit broad, and it'll cover what the fee will be for that, for that year of this pilot.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, you'll have a mover and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Cooper, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to ordinance on second reading and public hearing for listening purposes only. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinance or resolution for listening purposes only?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinance or resolutions on second reading and public hearing tonight?
Yes, Mr. President, we have two.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to ordinance number O-2022-00007, and it will be read into the record at a later time. I hereby declare a public hearing on ordinance O-2022-00007 open. If there's any member of the public who would like to comment for or against the ordinance, please come to the microphone, state your name and affiliation for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Let the record reflect there's no one wishing to speak for or against this ordinance. Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't have any questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
President, Mr. President.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to commend the county for what they're doing for Mr. Houston Stevens, who has been a long state conservancy, running a conservancy in Ivy Hill Park for the last 30 something years. And as you know, they have had successful basketball, basketball, and different things for, and they have a food festival every year for the people of Ivy Hill. And they've been doing a good job, and with the baseball, he has been very superb with it because we have a lot of participation. Because as you know, today, our young people, getting them into organized recreation is kind of hard because with some of the things that are happening out here in society today, a lot of parents are not really trusting it, but they have the trust of that community. And Houston Stevens has been the man in charge of that for over 30 years, and I think this would be an honor to have his name on that Little League field.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a motion and a second to close the public hearing on ordinance O-2022-00007.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Siebel. Do I have the same mover and a second to approve the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to ordinance number O-2022-00008, and it will be read into the record at a later date. I hereby declare the public hearing on ordinance number O-2022-00008 open. If there is any member of the public who would like to comment for or against this ordinance, please come to the microphone, state your name, affiliation for the record. You will have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Weller Demming, and I am Terry's mom. I just want to thank you all for recognizing him and his love of civics and sports and all that he accomplished on that field. One of his last games, that was his home field for his team, he was very active with Moncler Baseball, even telling the high school catcher which pitches to call. One of his last games, he turned a ball he shouldn't have swung at into a grand slam homerun. So he certainly celebrated being on that field, and we know amazing children have come through that field and gone on to success in athletics and many other endeavors, and we really appreciate all of you and County Executive DiVincenzo honoring his memory in this way, and we're very excited to see the kids who play on that field to come. And it's in beautiful shape. The wreath work was really well done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well deserved. Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Gill.
You know, not just to reiterate on the first reading, and I want to thank the County Executive, Board of Commissioners, and of course, you know, Ms. Weller for being here and for those words, and you know, what might, you know, what might not be known is that Terry was lost tragically at a very, a very young age, and, but I just want to commend Catherine and her family for continuing to contribute in their community and turning that tragedy into something very positive. So, so thank you, Mr. President, and for all the commissioners who are supporting this here today.
Do I have a mover and a second?
Like to move it, Mr. President.
Moved by Commissioner Gill, second by Mercado. Do I have the same mover and a second to approve the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
That field's going to bring joy to a lot of people for many, many years to come. Well deserved. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions one through three, which are from our budget insertions that will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Woods will handle item number one.
Mr. President, Board of County Commissioners, I'm here for item number one. My name is Michael Woods. I work for the Division of Community Action here in Essex County. This is revenue from the Division of Community Development for Emergency Solution Grant Funding in the amount of $1,184,600. This is going to be monies that are going to be coming to our office from former CARES Act funds that we are going to assist the Division of Housing and Community Development in administering. It's going to be split into Rapid Rehousing and Homelessness Prevention Funds, Rapid Rehousing Funds for folks that are literally homeless, Homelessness Prevention Funds for those that are at risk of homelessness. And there was a budget detail in here, but the majority of funds are going to be going towards folks that are literally homeless, as we are seeing that as the need that is going through our current homeless hotline.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Do I have a motion and a second to take? Let's go to, let's go to number two. Mr. Jackson.
Number two, Mr. President, is a budget insertion amount of $152,316, Division of Community Health. This is a grant that runs from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, funding for administrative services and oversight. This program supports individuals who are permanently and physically disabled throughout Essex County, ages 18 through 70, to provide them non-medical support to ensure that they remain vibrant and active members of our community, and there are no, there is no county match.
Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions.
Commissioners, let's move to number three. Mr. Jackson.
Number, number three, Mr. DelGaudio will handle this item, Mr. President.
Good evening. Frank DelGaudio, Director of Health and Rehabilitation for the county. Resolution number three is a budget insertion for the acronym LINKS Grant, which is the Link Information Network Communication System. It's for the Department of Health in the amount of $721,009. This is a, an extension of, we received a partial payment of this grant when we took over this system, and this is the remainder of a two-year program.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions, one, two, three? Hearing now, I need a motion.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number four, which is from the Department of Health and Rehabilitation, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. DelGaudio.
Mr. President, Frank DelGaudio, Director of Health and Rehabilitation for the County of Essex. Resolution number four is a, it's an intergovernmental transfer agreement between the county and the state of New Jersey, Division of Human Services. This is a duplication of the agreement from last, from 2020, 2021 fiscal year. Since the amount changes in the hospital fee pilot program, the state is requesting a revised intergovernmental transfer agreement.
Mr. Polavecchio.
Yeah. Frank, since this, since we discussed in that introduction and first reading of the ordinance, since the fee will change year to year, will we, will the state require a new agreement each year as that fee changes?
Through you, Mr. President, Frank DelGaudio, Director of Health and Rehab. That's correct. Every year that we need a new transfer agreement with this specific dollar amount.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments on resolution number four? Hearing now, you'll have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
We're going to move to resolution number six. Number five has been withdrawn by the administration. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Director Richardson-Green and the vendor are here to present this item.
Good evening, Commissioner President, Commissioner Board. The Department of Citizen Services, Division of Family Assistance and Benefits, my name is Valentina Richardson-Green. I am the Director of DFAB, has awarded Procop Securities LLC the lowest responsive and responsible bidder to provide security services at 320-321 University Avenue, Newark, beginning August 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2024, in an amount not to exceed $1,855,360. With me, I have the COO, Mr. Pierre from Procop. If you have any additional questions?
Let's get them up. Tell us who you are, and tell us a little bit about the contract, and a little bit about your company, the company.
Good evening, Mr. President, good evening, Board. My name is Mark Pierre. I'm the CEO of Procop Security. We're located right here in Newark, New Jersey. We employ staff of about 150 security guards. About 75% of them are, live in Essex County, and we are also a minority vendor. We do a lot of work with Newark Airport, Newark Housing Authority, and we're looking forward to working with the county.
Mr. Polavecchio.
Yeah, are you, Mr. Pierre, are your employees, the security officers, are they either retired police officers, or are they licensed to hold firearms?
So every officer that will be carrying a firearm will be licensed to carry a firearm. They will have a New Jersey permit to carry issued by the state police. Also, we verify it through a portal that we have online with state police that when they give us the permit to carry, we can go on there, put in their number, put in their SBI number, and then it'll pop up and populate, and then we let the state police know that they do work for our company. As far as retired officers or current officers go, I would say about 75% of our management is retired. My dad, who's also my partner, is retired Newark sergeant, and yeah, we have about maybe 75% of management supervisors that are retired, and the guys, some of them are licensed to carry, or, but not all.
Okay, but your actual security officers are, they're not active police officers?
Not every, not every single one, some of them.
Oh, some are?
Yes.
Thank you.
You asked all the questions I wanted to ask. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is this your first contract with the county of Essex?
First contract with Essex County, yes.
Well, welcome to the county of Essex. I'm a citizen administration. I'm excited to see a different vendor. Mr. Vendor, we're going to pay close attention to you since this is your first time doing business with us, and we look forward to you providing a good service.
Thank you. I look forward to working with everybody. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Johnson.
Excuse me, did, is your father, were they running the little security place up on Mount Vernon?
We were on Mount Vernon, and we moved downtown a couple of years ago.
Okay, you tell them to say hello.
Thank you.
Lucas, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Got to get the mic closer to you.
So again, yeah, I want to echo what my colleague, Commissioner Cooper, said. Welcome. Long time coming. About time I want to see more, I'd love to see more minority vendors get contracts, hundreds of millions of dollars that go out this door, and I'm happy to see it. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Board. Thank you.
Yeah, I need a mover and a second. Moved by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number seven, which is from the Board of Elections, and we read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Coltrane.
Sounds like you're passing a buck.
Mr. President, this is a resolution approving an emergency for tables and chairs for the Board of Elections, not to exceed $35,377.70. We did go out three different times for tables and chairs, and each time we came back with no vendors. So in that particular case, because of this yesterday's election, we had a, had a emergency, so they have table and chairs for the polling places.
Thank you, Ms. Coltrane. Commissioner, Ms. Parker.
No questions.
Commissioners, hearing now, I need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number eight, which is from the Office of the Surrogate, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, the Honorable Alterique Kenny, our surrogate, is going to present
Good evening, President, Commissioners, and the county residents. Sorry. Got it. Thank you. Resolution number eight, Officer of the Surrogate Professional Service Agreement to Provide Bluestone Software Maintenance Support for the County Business Systems.
Put your, put your name on the record, sir.
I apologize. My name is Alterique Kenny, surrogate for the County of Essex. CBS is a proprietary case management software. Bluestone is utilized by our court, Essex County Surrogate Court, to enter data and generate documents and reports with respect to probate administration, guardianship, adoptions, and other matters that fall under our jurisdiction. Bluestone is an important tool we use to ensure that we run efficiently and effectively.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a mover and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Let's move to resolutions nine and 10, which are from the Department of Parks, and we still won't have our sign on anything, our picture, and we will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zage will handle these items.
Joshua Zage, Essex County Parks. Number nine is a contract award to Challenge Towers to provide inspection, maintenance, equipment, and training programs for Treetop Adventure Course, not 24-month contract, not to exceed $401,643. This is for the ropes course over at the Turtleback Zoo. The contract-
The contract includes two inspections per year. They service any equipment that needs servicing. They also provide new equipment as needed, and it's also for course maintenance repair, and they also provide staff training. Number Ten is a contract award to Midwest Veterinary Supply Co. to, to provide veterinary equipment, contract period one year, not to exceed $38,326.51. Originally, when we bid this contract out, it was for seven pieces of equipment, but only three are being recommended as being awarded due to the others not meeting the specifications provided within the spec. Specifically, these are for an X-ray unit, electro-surgical generator, and an HM5 CBC machine. I am sure the Board is very curious what all that means. X-ray machine is self-explanatory. It's replacing an older X-ray machine. The electro-surgical generator is used for surgeries, helps keep the lights on, so to speak. And then the HM5 CBC machine is to test blood. This is the first time we'll be having this machine. In the past, we would draw blood from the animals, send it down to a lab. This is going to be a much quicker and more cost-effective method of doing so. The zoo does employ one full-time vet. Happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Mr. Paul Avakia.
Yes, thank you. Josh, on number nine with the ropes course contract, is that, that vendor's the same vendor who has had the previous contract?
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Through you, Mr. President. It's been the same vendor for the, the life of the rope course, which now has got to be in excess of 10 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions on Nine and Ten? Is the vendor here for number 10?
They, Mr. President, they are not. They're based out of South Carolina.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, for number 10?
No, we don't need him for number 10. You mean nine?
No, number 10, we do not have the vendor.
No, nine, no, nine.
Nine, we still do not have the vendor.
They didn't have to be here because they, they're specialists, and they've been here for 10 years, so. Okay. Any questions on nine or 10? Here we go. I need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 11 through 14, which are from the Department of Public Works, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Antonio will handle these items.
Good evening. David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number 11 is a contract award to VA Electric to perform electrical improvements throughout all county facilities on a as-needed basis over 24 months. This contract will not exceed $686,853. VA Electric's bid was the lowest of the four received, and Mr. Vladimir Gutlik will now come up to the microphone and introduce his company and perhaps answer any questions the Board may have.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, Board. My name is Vladimir Gutlik, from VA Electrical Contractor LLC. We are electrical company, and we used to have the Siebel contract in the past, and we successfully completed. Could you speak up?
Can I ask him start all?
Yes, we successfully completed the Siebel contract a couple of years ago for Essex County, and we get ready to do it again.
So, Mr. Paul Avakia.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? Where's your company located?
In Mammoth County.
In Mammoth County?
Yes.
And how long have you had this contract?
Two years.
For two years? Do you employ any Essex County residents?
Not currently not, but we plan to do it if necessary.
But you would know if it's necessary, if you need employees or not?
Yeah, I have.
But if you want us to, if you want me to tell you whether or not you should do it, I could, I'll, I'll be happy to do that. Okay. Thank you.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number 12, will allow for the purchase of a new wheeled front end loader to replace the current piece of equipment which has reached its end-of-life cycle. This particular front end loader would be stationed at the DPW facility in Cedar Grove. Item Number 13 is an award to Foggia Trinity Electrical to undertake the installation of a new traffic signal at the current stop-controlled intersection of White Oak Road, Hobart Gap Road, and Hobart Avenue in the township of Melbourne. This contract will not exceed $440,580, and will be completed in 210 days. Foggia Trinity's bid was the lowest of the four received, and Mr. Anthony Cifeli will briefly describe the project and again answer any questions the Board may have.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Cifeli. I'm the President of Foggia Trinity Electric. I've been working for the County of Essex for the last 28 years in doing traffic signals, roadway improvements, and other various traffic signal rehabilitation projects.
Mr. Paul Avakia.
Mr. President, I, I have a selfish question, Mr. Cifeli. Does this contemplate an extended time of road closure at this spot?
It shouldn't be that extensive. We'll try to make it as inconvenient as possible to everyone.
Not as inconvenient, I got you. That road's pretty inconvenient under the best of circumstances. That's why I ask. Thank you. That was, thank you for the indulgence.
That's one of those roads you travel often.
That's one of them.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Mr. Cifeli, where, where is your company located?
Scotts Plains.
Scotts Plains. And you've had this contract for 28 years? You've been working for the county for 28 years?
That is correct.
How many Essex County residents do you employ?
I currently have one. We are a union company with 825, 472, and 102, and if, what I do is, when I require more employees, I ask if I can obtain any Essex County employee, Essex County residents. All I could do is request.
Now, you got the right letters, right numbers. We're good. Next.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number 14 is a contract award to Mac McDonald in an amount not to exceed $180,500 to provide engineering, environmental services for remediation of underground storage tanks throughout the county. Mac McDonald's proposal was the highest scoring of the 12 received, and this contract period will be for 12 months. Robert Trepp has joined us as well this evening to touch on the scope of work perhaps and introduce his company.
Rob Trepp, Senior Project Scientist, Mac McDonald. Good evening, everyone. Mac McDonald's been doing work in Essex County for over 65 years, and we have, currently have 40 employees that work, live in Essex County. We take pride in the fact that we have a very diverse staff from various, several countries over the world. This contract is to provide environmental services to the county on existing and as-needed sites. In simple terms, it revolves around environmental compliance and meeting permit requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Avakia.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Here we go. I need a mover and a second. Take 11 through 14 as you want.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
He, yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 15, which is from the Office of the County Executive, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Coltrane.
Mr. President, this is a $50,000 contract to Vero Trophies and Plaques. One bid was received. The incumbent vendor is from East Orange. They have five employees for, from Essex.
Thank you for that information. Mr. Paul Avakia.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Here we go. I need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Siebel. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 16 and 17, which are from the Office of the County Council, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Both of these items relate to our vaccination centers. The first one, Item 16, is for, relates to Kmart. The Kmart location closed, and this is simply extending that lease from May 1st, 2022 through May 31st, 2022. The, the owner there has some grant plans for that space, so we were no longer able to stay there, so we extended it for one month. They gave us one month to extend, and this kind, this lease extension simply covers that one month that is now completed, and this is from grant funding from the ARP funds. Item Number 17, similar thing, but this is for the Sears location in Livingston. This is a three-month extension through September 30th, 2022. You may recall that the original lease was covered under the COVID-19 emergency, which ends on July 1, 2022, and so we're coming to the Board to, outside of that emergency, to allow for a three-month extension, and we will see, obviously, as the, as COVID, whatever happens there, we'll see what we need to do beyond that, but for the moment, we think this is an adequate amount of time for an extension.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Paul Avakia.
And, Mr. Jackson, 16 is just ratifying that agreement. This is, this is done already, right?
That's through you, Mr. President.
I mean, this period, this lease term is complete. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments on 16 and 17? Here we go. I need a motion and a second.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 18, which is from the Office of Purchasing, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Coltrane.
Mr. President, this is a, an award in the amount not to exceed $450,000. The last award was for $324,000. We spent $291,681.77. The last contract was for four vendors. This particular time, we have two, which is Drew Rogers Inc. in Fairfield, New Jersey, and Dot Design. It's for embroidery, silk screening, and other sundries that the various departments use throughout the county.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Avakia.
I don't have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will we be reduced with the options of things that we might want to order, going down to two vendors versus four?
No, every, Mr. President Julius Coltrane, Purchasing Director, all the items are available still for purchase.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Here we go. I need a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner. Why do I keep wanting to call you your other guy? Mercado.
His spirit is right there.
And second by Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number 19, which is from the Office of the County Administrator. It will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a three-year contract with Princeton Public Affairs Group in an amount not to exceed $90,000. This group has been working with the county now for 25 years, actually, and their services are, conclude consulting and liaison services with various government entities, particularly the state of New Jersey, (cough) excuse me, arranging all meetings with state officials and legislative and executive branches, preparing testimony and correspondence for legislative and executive branch advocacy, assisting the county in achieving favorable results with respect to the county's government affairs, needs, and state government, and advocate for Essex County to secure funding through the state appropriation process for the Seven County Historic Preservation Trust project. Again, longtime vendor, and this is again a three-year contract, not to exceed $90,000.
Mr. Paul Avakia.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Here we go. I need a mover and a second.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Gill.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President.
I would like to, um, request to the clerk that, um, a meeting be set up with a consultant, uh, to discuss the Essex Hudson Greenway. Um, if we had this representation, um...
Absolutely.
And Trenton, I guess maybe we were normally, normally there's a representative from the... But I guess were we under the threshold?
That, that is correct, okay, sure.
And I, I have, and maybe I've missed it, but I haven't seen, they used to send a memorandum to us on...
I, I believe.
Accomplishments for the year, or, I, I don't have an issue with the contract, through you, Mr. President, necessarily, you know? But just, you know, we have a, we have a very, um, active, uh, county executive who seems to have excellent relationships with state government, um, which I think we're all very proud of. So I would like to also just understand and know what we're actually getting for our $90,000.
That's a fair question.
I, I believe the board gets a, um, newsletter, uh, from this organization about what they're working on, or, 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 uh, update. I'm not sure how quick, how often.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen the generic one that they send out as a general matter. I just, specific to...
Understood.
Specific to, um, and who, and who, through you, Mr. President, who's the lead from their firm on the account?
Mr. Pesgrau.
He's still the lead? Okay.
Yes, yes, and, and I, uh, I apologize, Commissioner, uh, Mr. Pesgrau, uh, said he was willing to come, but we said because of the amount, it wasn't necessary. But if you would like for him to come to, uh, uh, the meeting in July, we can, we can do that if you wish.
Absolutely, that's what I think Commissioner Gill is requesting. We want to hear an update. We want to hear from him. We haven't heard from him personally, in, in person, in quite some time. So I, I think it's overdue. I think that's a fair, a fair request.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, no, you know, reputable firm and no, no issue with the, which I'm sure the service is, but I think that's a fair, uh...
Absolutely.
A fair request.
I think we had a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Resolutions 20 through 37. Commissioners, any questions or comments on...
Yes, Mr. President.
I agree, I was gonna add.
I was gonna add the same as well.
20 be via acclamation?
Also 26, I'd like to be by acclamation. 20 will be by acclamation.
26 by acclamation?
20 will be by acclamation.
Yes.
Okay.
And 26.
Commissioner Cooper, I think you...
Yes, yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Through you, Madam.
Commissioner Luciano.
Through you, Mr. President. I'd like to be added, if it's okay, uh, to number 25. Um, I know it's sponsored by Commissioner Gill.
Sure.
And just for the record, I'm sure a lot of folks in this room know, but if everyone on the board doesn't know, he, he also was a county employee, and, and one that everyone knows.
Can we do by acclamation?
Yeah, I'd like to be added, sure.
By acclamation.
25 would be via acclamation.
By acclamation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Hearing now, need a mover and a second. You take 20 through 37, and one. Moved by Commissioner Cooper.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any added starters?
Uh, no, Mr. President, we have not.
Okay, let's move to report of board committees. Commissioners, any reports of board committees? Any legislative reports? Any written communications? Any unfinished business? Any new business? In that case, let's move to public comment session. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on any matter, please come to the microphone, state your name, address, and affiliation. For the record, you will have three minutes to speak.
My name is Pamela McElven. Good evening, everyone in the board, the president. I'm here on behalf of, um, I'm also, uh, the CEO of the Palm Street Block Association. We are a nonprofit organization, been around since the late 90s. I also advocate for Velsbury Park, and I just registered as the Velsbury Park Community Conservancy. Before I go on, I had a, a whole bunch with three minutes.
Excuse me, could you speak into the mic?
We have, I had a list of things. Um, I'm happy to the fact that we had the groundbreaking Monday at Velsbury Park. But I'm also disappointed in the sense when, since January of this year, because now I'm stepping into something new, and I'm learning as I go. And I have reached out to Mr. Johnson since January, from email to phone calls to texting, and I haven't got a response yet in respect of sitting down with some of the community peoples and putting all this together, preparing ourselves for something brand new. Okay, so that part, yeah, I'm, I'm very disappointed in that. It's a long time coming, and, you know, a long time. He spoke, Mr. Johnson spoke at the groundbreaking, saying how he loved, and he grew up in that area, but what took so long for it to come to, to surface? I have to say, Joe D. did come over to me afterwards and apologize and shook my hand for not recognizing me being there at that point. He did. We spoke for a little while about different things. So I even mentioned to him, on this Oprah report, it states from 2015 to 2016, there is still pending things that should have been done in the park then, two buildings, and is still pending. The traffic measures, I spoke to him about it. I asked him, did the city engineer department, Philip Scott, ever get in contact with the city? Because he told me he had to get in contact with the county, the state, and the DOT, they had to come together, make some type of salute, because it's a very dangerous area. He said he haven't heard anything. Mr. Sean Salvage with the city...
30 seconds.
With the city, um, engineer department, said he contacted the county and the state, and he haven't heard anything back from anyone. I asked him, did he follow up? No. He said that's the responsibility that the city should take for is getting policemen, and the county should be responsible for having the sheriff car there, to be there in the morning from 7:00 to 9:00. So we need some type of speed measure there.
Time's up.
If we open up a park, there's gonna be a lot of traffic. Safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak at this time?
Good evening. James Troisi, recording secretary spokesperson for FOP 106, representing the sworn supervisory staff at the Essex County Department of Corrections, recording secretary for the State Fraternal Order of Police. Two weeks ago, we stood at this mic, questioned the legality of a resolution regarding the hiring of 41 correctional police officers, prior to the approval by this body and the Civil Service Commission. We thank you for the roughly two hours of debate on a single resolution. That was ultimately approved, and we remind you again that those officers were hired prior to being psychiatrically cleared and fit for duty. This body, after nearly two hours of debate, backed into a corner, ultimately approved, but qualified the approval. Should never happen again. We want demographic information. So here's, that was a legal question, here's an ethical one. How is it that nine additional officers have started since? That they had promises of employment the night that Director Ortiz stood at this microphone and Warden Cirillo was on the phone? Civil Service wasn't aware of it, we've confirmed that, and since the Hall of Records doesn't seem to want to take anybody to task, we have notified Civil Service that we are going to pursue action. On May 24th, a 26-year-old man died in a shower at the jail. May 25th, we were here while the county, uh, while the jail administration specifically sought retroactive permission to hire people, and oddly enough, on May 26th, one of the very people hired, without being psychiatrically cleared, had to be let go because his psych results came in, and guess where he was working the day the man died? Body of the whole, Penal Safety Committee. Are you aware that POSH is openly investigating the Essex County Correctional Facility? Are you aware that the Department of Environmental Protection is reviewing records at the Essex County Correctional Facility? That last week, the State Parole Board removed all its prisoners from the Essex County Correctional Facility and transferred them to the Hudson County Jail? That the Union County Department of Corrections transferred all of its female prisoners out of Essex County and into the Hudson County Jail? We don't know what else to say. We've been yelling at the walls and raising our hands. Our people have been going to the hospital. One officer had reconstructive surgery on his face.
30 seconds.
What more do we have to do to get somebody to tell the jail administration they're doing something wrong? They're doing something wrong. State agencies are now pulling their prisoners out of the jail. We can't be the only ones that see a problem. Thank you.
Can we find out, Madam Clerk? If that's indeed accurate, that we were told that 41 correctional officers were being hired and no others will be hired until after July 16th, if I'm not mistaken?
I, Mr. President, I don't agree with that, uh, that was what we talked about. Because if you may recall, the, um, the order from the Civil Service Commission, um, uh, says, uh, although, I'm just quoting from page four and five. Although an ordinance is not required to make temporary appointments in accordance with NJSA 11A-4-13C, the commission reminds Essex County, as the association, meaning the PBA association highlights, that it will need to pass an ordinance or resolution in compliance with P- Public Law 2021, um, C406, which was the governing order, to make such appointments after, after, after July 17, 2022. Finally, the commission emphasizes that best practices in diversity and inclusion should be utilized when recruiting and appointing depositions under this authority, so, which means passing a nepotism, uh, ord- uh, law, which we already have on the books here at the county. So the, the, the authority granted to us by the, um, Civil Service Commission, which we reviewed, uh, and I admittedly somewhat clumsily last time, but it's clear that, um, again, that it will be necess- that, that the, the ability to hire a temporary appointment, um, uh, through July 17th, without, without the ordinance that the, the board passed last time, was what, what the commission gave, gave us the ability to do. I'll read it again.
So, no, 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 so let me, let me ask you a question. So, so the, uh, county has the, they can hire as many people as they want through July 16th, 17th, is that what you're saying?
With, with, without the ordinance that the board passed last time, but we now have the ordinance in place, and we have the nepotism policy in place. So we're actually ahead of the game in terms of the time parameters that the Civil Service Commission gave us.
Okay.
And I, and I have to say, and again, I, with all due respect to Mr. Troisi, um, we have been making, uh, an ex- uh, an intentional effort to reduce the population at the jail. Um, we, we view the functional, uh, capacity to be about 2,400. We've been as low as, uh, 2,170, I think, uh, in the last couple of, three weeks, and we have been pressing the state of New Jersey to remove prisoners from the facility. Um, Mr. Ortiz, in particular, has been charged with that task. Um, we've asked them to remove because we want to make sure that we're not over capacity. So yes, the, the, the state of New Jersey has removed, um, uh, prisoners from, uh, from us, and, but, and they've also taken some to their own facilities. Uh, but as you know, too, they've closed down a number there, so there's only so many places that they can send, um, uh, prisoners. But part, part, a large part of the reason why we're, the state is taking prisoners out of our facility is that we've been impressing upon them the need to get to, and, and we're not requ- we know with a certain time period where they're, where they're with us, and then after that, they pay, and it's a little bit of a complicated thing. But bottom line is, we have been working aggressively with the state of New Jersey to remove its, um, prisoners from our facility to ensure that our capacity isn't, uh, up to the max.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Cooper and then Commissioner Johnson.
I'll, I'll give to Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson.
Okay, um, I am, we are still waiting for that report that was supposed to be, uh, issued to us. That, on that contract we did about, what, three months ago, four months ago? It was supposed to be the 90-day contract.
Six months ago.
It's, it's six months. Where are we with that, with that report?
Is that, you're talking about the, from Ambrose Group?
Yes. Uh, yes, uh, through you, Mr. President. Um, you're correct, Commissioner, and, uh, I reached out to the facility management to understand a little bit better when to expect that report, um, and I was, I was hoping to get an answer for you before tonight, so, before this meeting's over. I haven't received it yet, but I did make your, as I promised to you, I did make the inquiry via text, and I'm just waiting to hear back. Um, I, I, I don't, I couldn't, I don't feel comfortable giving you when it will. I think it's imminent, but I don't feel comfortable giving you a specific date. But I will have a date for you, either by the end of this meeting or by tomorrow, which I will share with the, with Madam Clerk. To get to the board. For the record that, uh, because the NAACP's from our cities here in, in, in Essex County, we're waiting on that to meet, so that we can meet. Understood. And, you know, and, uh, you know, they want to meet because there are a lot of issues that, and concerns that they have about the facility. And, uh, I, I want to schedule a meeting, but I don't want to do it till we have that report. Through you, Mr. President. Fully, fully understand, Commissioner, and again, I commit to you, I will have an, an answer to you no later than tomorrow, to that, which I will give to Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would encourage Administrator Jackson to go back and review the tape from the last meeting, because we were very specific when we passed that resolution with some, um, things that we expected to see between the administration and the commissioner board, for us to both be on the same page with moving that resolution forward. One of the things that we expressly talked about was not, you guys not hiring any additional officers until you sat with Commissioner President, Commissioner Vice President, to talk about the process. You know, how do you bring people in? When do they get their sites? When do they go through the background checks? So I left that meeting, supporting that resolution, under that impression, that you guys were gonna meet and talk about the process. And to hear now that that didn't happen, um, and that you guys hired an additional non, nine people, kind of gives me, uh, a, a, a bad taste in my mouth. Also coupled with the fact that on that very day when we passed that resolution, uh, another inmate had unfortunately passed away. I have some concerns, and I think that, um, Mr. President, we need to, um, have some more assertive conversations with the administration related to this prison. The last couple of days, I've gotten phone calls from this mother, who, um, an inmate down where he is. He was arrested two or three weeks ago, never, according to the mother, doesn't have a criminal background at all. It took two weeks for an assessment to be done for the young man to get his psychotropic medicine, when the mother had told them that he was on, um, this medication. She brought them copies of the bottles of pills, and it took two weeks. The young man is there now, um, I think going on week three, week four. When he was arrested, he came in with glasses on his face. He has been there, the last time I talked to the mother yesterday, still without eyeglasses on his face. I've directed her to, um, the, on Budsmann, um, a patient advocate, and according to the mother, she has not been getting a whole lot of response. So that's very, um, disappointing all the way around, to hear what this woman has gone through, and to hear that your position is that you guys could just go off and hire more people without, um, honoring the agreement that we all had when we was here this meeting two weeks ago.
Um, uh, through you, Mr. President, um, I, I do have a different understanding, but to be as it may, we, we were happy to. I thought the, the, the process was gonna be that Chairman, uh, Johnson was gonna convene a, a penal committee meeting for us to engage in those discussions, and I, and maybe that's a miscommunication, but I thought that was the, the venue through which we were gonna talk about it, and we're happy to do it. I mean, I, with the entire, I think that's a committee of the whole anyway, so if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So, um, we're happy to ha- have the discussions, um... We're happy to have those discussions. There's no, you know, ulterior motive or, or in that regard, and I, I, I apologize if we, if there was a miscommunication, um, but we're happy to have the discussions about how the hiring is, is, is done. It's, it's not a secret, it's not a, you know, but happy to have it, and whenever the board would like to schedule a, a committee meeting, we're, we're there.
Mr. Jackson, um, just a question about the Ambrose, um, contract. Did they have a date certain in the contract in which they were supposed to give a report?
My, uh, recollection, it was a 90-day, uh, contract. It was a 90-day report.
Correct.
Yeah, it's 90-day. Um, I think as they've gone through and, and looked at more issues, they've done more, more digging, more research, and it's extended.
So they, so their contract has been extended?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that they're, we, we did not come back to the board to, to, uh, extend their, their contract. I just don't think they're, they're just not done. Um, and, and, but I, as I said, Mr. Mr. President, I will have a definitive answer and a full answer to the board through Madam Clerk, uh, no later than tomorrow.
Fantastic. And then Mrs. Johnson, uh, Commissioner Johnson, I would encourage you to, um, schedule a hearing, schedule a meeting as, as soon as possible.
I, I spoke to Deborah Davis, uh, Deborah Gregory, and I told her that, uh, the report was due, and...
Overdue, actually. Overdue, actually.
Well, overdue. And I told her that as soon as we get this report, because it wouldn't make sense to me again and again, we could bring everything together at one time.
Right. Let's see if we can ascertain exactly when we're gonna get that report and then.
Exactly. That's why.
Schedule a meeting accordingly. Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Mr. President, the, the, it was publicly, and I'm just trying to understand this part, reported that the task force, and I just want to be clear here, that we have an independent civilian task force that was created through, you know, through ordinance passed by this board, that they were working with Mr. Ambrose on that, on that report. Can you clarify that? I mean, what are they exactly doing as it pertains to the report? And what's the relationship between, and maybe we need to ask the task force. I understand that they're a separate entity, you know, from county government. But any insight on what that looks like and how that's currently being handled?
Through you, Mr. President, I do know that Chairman Governor McGreevy had been working closely with that study. I don't know how many other members of the task force, you know, have been as intimately involved as he has been. But that's information I can get to the board. Again, I'll have that for you tomorrow. I can't answer directly what members and what the nature of their involvement has been. I simply don't know.
Commissioner, Commissioner Gill?
So I guess through you, Mr. President, you know, I probably would like to reach out also to the, you know, to our, to the task force. And I know they have to give some updates, you know, according to the ordinance. I don't know where we are and how many times they need to come back. But, you know, it seems like it might be an appropriate time to.
Let's get them in here as well.
Have them come back to the board and update. I believe their last public meeting was sometime in January or February. I don't know. There was another public meeting between now and between then and now, you know, on those, on those issues.
Absolutely. That's fair. Madam Clerk, you got that?
Yes, Mr. President. Just to be clear, topic of discussion, to have them come before or to participate in the penal meeting? Or both?
Yeah, what about both? Topic of discussion, they're not gonna have a whole lot of time to speak then. But they can come in and give us a summary.
Okay.
And then come back with the penal meeting.
Will do.
And remember, everyone who spoke, who asked a question, it will be answered in writing.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes.
Did you want Mr. Pasquale to be a topic of discussion as well, or, because you want?
Nah, I think he needs to come in and give us a, yeah, give us a report in terms of.
You can do that in the topic of discussion.
Yeah, we don't want them both at the same meeting. Yeah, okay. We'll schedule Mr. Pasquale.
Then I'll reach out to the, Mr. Jackson.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, again, if I may, I stand corrected. The contract for the Ambrose Group was a maximum period of 180 days. So I missed, but I thought there was an interim report, but the contract length is 180 days. It says a final report will be submitted fifteen, fifteen days after conclusion of the final assessment date. So they're not quite there.
So of the assessment date, so they can have a 180-day contract, and then takes another six months to assess, and then give the report 15 days after that? Because there's, there's no, is their date certain? So is it 15 days after the 180 days, or 15 days after they assess what they found during 180 days?
It says the assessment will commence immediately on the execution of a professional services contract and run for a maximum period of 180 days. The Ambrose Group will deliver a written progress report to the county council on or before the 90th day following the commencement. That's what the 90-day came in. And a final report will be submitted 15 days after the conclusion of the final assessment date. So from the date of the signing of the contract, 180 days, 15 days after that, there should be this final report.
But the 90 days, there should be interim report that they were giving to county council. And I think we passed that part, right?
That is correct.
So we'd like to see what, we'd like to see what's in that report. So we probably need to get county council in here, so we can kind of understand. Even if we have to do it behind closed doors, but I think we need to understand what's in that report. What they've given, if they've given anything.
Yeah, I don't believe that, I don't believe that part of the mission, but I'll find out.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also remind us that during the time that we were evaluating the Ambrose Group's contract, there was a lot of discussion about the 90-day timeframe. And given the sensitive nature of why we were bringing them in, we, the board, had requested to equally be apprised of some of the preliminary findings. And there was supposed to be a discussion between the administration and the board's leadership about what we exactly were going to get. Did that ever kick, please?
I think I'm part of the leadership, but I don't recall it happening.
Okay. So, may I suggest, Mr. President and Council Commissioner Johnson, if we could just take the initiative and put the meetings on the calendar? Because we're past the 90-day window. We're hovering at the six-month, 180 days. And it, I think we need like a sense of urgency that, that what is going on there, especially given the reason for us bringing in Ambrose. Also, I would love to see a report from the task force. What exactly have they been working on? If they're working in tandem with Mr. Ambrose and his firm, and if there's been any corrective action taken at all? Because remember, since this came up, we had another unfortunate person who passed away just a week ago. So what has been done?
Duly noted. Anything else, Commissioners? Here now, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Cooper, second by McConnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye's having, so move.